Hi everyone, this is Hamid Hamoucha. I'm one of the co-organizers of the workshop, also co-founder at IAD. I'm going to be running this session along with my colleague Keith McCormick. And we're going to be talking about the challenge of trying to understand the landscape of training when it comes to data science. So we have a short presentation for you that we want to share. What you see is a word cloud of the thousands of offerings that are out there in data science training. You see a lot of buzzwords being thrown around there. And it is a bit of a challenge. And the main reason is if you're a student or if you're a candidate or a professional wanting to advance in data science, it's not always easy to try and understand the various options out there. And what each option is going to bring you in terms of the skill sets and the knowledge that you need. And if you're an academician, it might be challenging to actually decide on what to include. Because we're talking about a huge domain, obviously. So building curriculum might look very different from one school or one organization to the other. So these are the kinds of questions that we'll try to answer today. So our agenda, we've started conducting some research on this. We're going to share some of our initial findings, although it is a very much work in progress. The first one is a survey that we are running for recent graduates of data science and analytics training programs. Then we're going to provide a review of the broader landscape when it comes to data science training. And then our second survey, which we're conducting, that's geared towards academicians or designers, developers of curriculum in data science. So with that, I'm going to throw it to my co-presenter Keith. So Keith, please take it away.
Thanks, Hamid. Okay, so we collected some survey data to look at this. Now, of course, the disadvantage of survey data is that very often you have to live with a convenient sample, which is what we had here. But the advantage of survey data is that you get perception information that you're not going to be able to get any other way. So we promoted the survey on LinkedIn and we had more than 200 click on the survey link. But we were really looking for survey respondents that had had recent formal training. So of those more than 200 that clicked on the link, we had 160 complete. And of that, 118 or 73% had taken this formal training within the last 12 months. This gives you an idea of the breakdown. We had folks that were already employed. Now, given the fact that they had recently trained, some of these folks have been in their position for three, six months or a year or so. Some a little bit more experienced than that, but we really were looking for newly minted data scientists. Some were still seeking, some showed an interest in data science, but were neither of those prior categories. And if you notice in the middle of the Venn diagram, there were a non-trivial number, more than a dozen, that overlapped these various areas, including two individuals that reported being in all three. So we asked a number of questions. Now, we're not going to be walking you through all of the results today. We're hoping to collect more data over time. So we really want to zero in on one particular aspect of this, which is going to be really the skill set aspect. But we did ask a number of questions. We asked about the specific institution that they attended. Also, we were terribly curious about how easy it was to find information about the programs that they chose. Because we ourselves have found it difficult in many cases to find information about these programs. And I'll have more to say about that. We were curious how many alternatives they considered and whether or not the program met their expectations. Again, we won't be reviewing all of the results. We're going to focus on the skill set aspect today. So a couple of things that we started to see as early patterns forming. We noticed that, on average, the bootcamp and online certificate program attendees found it easier to find information. And that was consistent with our experience. It's not that the university and college programs concealed this information. It was usually that you would have to provide an email and then they would send a PDF. Or course names would be listed. But to find out the content of the courses, you had to go into syllabi or that kind of information, which usually was not readily available. That was usually information that became more clear once you actually started in these programs. So researching the content of these programs is more difficult than you might think if you haven't tried it yourself. In contrast, the bootcamps and the online certificates generally would have fairly detailed lists of what was contained within these courses right there on the very same websites. So again, our experience and that of the survey respondents was consistent. So how exactly did we go about asking these questions? Well, what we were especially curious about were these newly minted data scientists that had just been through formal training within the last 12 months and that were now employed asking about this. So for those that were currently employed, we asked which of the skill areas are the most important in your current job? And then since not everybody in the survey was currently employed, we asked a slightly different phrasing for those that described themselves as job-seeking or exploring data science as a career. But the way that the answers were phrased were the same for both of those groups. Ranging from one, that the skill area was not important, all the way up to five, very important. And again, the results are preliminary at this point, but let's talk about what we found. So the knowledge area is a theme throughout IAD's work, and we'll have more to say about that. But here are the high-level areas in this knowledge taxonomy. And what we found is that all of three of these groups agreed that data preparation was highly valued. But then there were some differences, particularly in the middle of the range of topics you see there. Probably the most noteworthy one is the scientific or statistical computing. So note, we made a distinction between statistics as a discipline that falls under mathematics in the skill map, as opposed to statistical computing like R or scikit-learn and so on. And notice that we see a slightly higher emphasis for the college and university degree programs for a couple of these areas. Perhaps this would be consistent with my experience. I've done some teaching for the UC Irvine certificate program. It could be that something like Python might be a prerequisite for the material. Again, we're still uncovering these patterns, but this was some initial results. I'll also finally notice that of the different skill areas, general purpose computing and the big data infrastructure topics coming in the lowest overall. But notice that since it ranges from one to five, an average of three certainly does not indicate that those individuals thought it was unimportant. It's that you can anticipate that's more a mixed answer on those. We also broke this down by those that are employed and those that are seeking. Not dramatic differences here, except for the ones lower on the scale that we just mentioned, the general purpose computing and the big data infrastructure. Okay, now, we did want to talk a little bit about this. Now, remember, this is from the student's point of view, what they emphasized in their own selection. So for the bootcamps and the college/university students, the highest rated reason for selecting the program was the reputation of the institution and of the instructors. For the online certificate graduates, the most important for them was the breadth of available course options. And actually, we're going to be saying more about that because there's incredible diversity in these online options. Okay, the survey wasn't the only approach that we took. We also did some research going directly to the internet, some internet scraping and so on, trying to both describe and quantify the range of these programs. And boy, they really are diverse. And the problem that I referred to earlier is very much a challenge where sometimes you get names of courses, but not descriptions of courses. In other words, getting a syllabi was not always a straightforward thing. Couple of things that's interesting that are ongoing projects that we're doing, and the team has done really good work on this, developing a map of all the programs in the world to the extent that we've done it. In fact, when we did an initial rollout of this map a couple of weeks ago and announced it to folks, we had some feedback from LinkedIn adding a couple more. So we hope this to be an ongoing dialogue with the community so that we can get this information as complete as possible. But it's really striking when these programs started to take off, right around 2012, 13, 14, there is the beginning of an explosion in the availability of these programs. Now specifically, we are looking for programs that have these key phrases, data science, business analytics, and data analytics in the name. So clearly, it's not that statistics wasn't taught prior to this, but this is where these names specifically given to these programs, sometimes master's programs in fact, that are using these descriptors. So what I find fascinating is that if you go back in the internet time machine, you find out that the birth of DataCamp closely aligns with what we just saw in the prior slide. So founded in 2013, but really starting to take off in terms of internet searches in 2014. Now, we're going to be talking about two different online options. Of course, there's many, many more than two. But DataCamp really does focus on the data science and analytics side of the house. So although there is a program called Data Science for Everyone, that is somewhat the exception to the rule. What's much more common in DataCamp is when it's highly specific to scikit-learn, pandas, R, and so on. These programs tend to be very much tied to the programming language or the platform. In contrast, LinkedIn Learning, another popular option, somewhat the reverse trend, where the skill set or the potential role that the person is playing is more dominant in how we do these courses or the learning paths are described. So if you look on the right-hand side of the slide, for instance, if I were to choose best match for the 34 learning paths, I might see a different option than someone else visiting the same site. So obviously, the algorithm is somehow looking at my activity on LinkedIn Learning and determining that one or another learning path is the best match. The current one, just as recently as a couple of days ago, the current one for view count is the learning path entitled "Advance Your Skills in Deep Learning and Neural Networks", which possibly indicates that LinkedIn Learning is somewhat moving a little bit more in the direction of being highly specific to a particular set of tools. Then finally, this is very interesting stuff as well. There's tremendous diversity in the bootcamps. The bootcamps are a popular option, but they are widely diverse. The bulk of them tend to be a few weeks, notice that there's a spike at 12, and then there's another spike at 24 weeks. So those are common ones where you tend to get a grouping of points. There was a very expensive option that we encountered that was aimed at C-level executives. That was just the one week, but also the most expensive option. And on occasion, you'll find ones that are much longer than that. So that gives you a taste of the survey results and some of those other options that are out there.
Hi again, thanks Keith. So Keith talked about the breadth of options out there. There are literally thousands of options from online certificates to degree programs. What I want to do is dive a little deeper into the content of these programs, right? So here are two examples from master's programs. They're both masters of data science, one, you know, two reputable universities, Carnegie Mellon and Columbia. And you'll see that when you look at the course titles at least, that the focus areas are, you know, can be quite distinct, right? So, you know, for instance, Carnegie Mellon, there's a lot of stuff about machine learning. There's cloud computing, search engines, you know, big data technology, et cetera. Whereas in Columbia, you'll see probability theory, you know, statistical inference, you know, et cetera. So you would guess, just looking at the titles of these courses, that two people graduating from two really high-quality programs will probably end up with skill sets that might be different from each other. Similar picture, when you look at undergraduate programs, these are four-year programs. Again, two different examples. On the left side, you know, you'll see programming, data wrangling, et cetera. Whereas on the right-hand side, you'll see a lot of statistics, calculus, algorithms, et cetera. You know, same message. And, you know, Keith reviewed two of the leading platforms, but there are literally hundreds of them. Udacity and Coursera are also, you know, well-known. Thousands and thousands of people are taking courses on these large platforms. When you look at the introduction to data science, your learning paths on Coursera and Udacity, again, you'll see that the focus, you know, is completely different. You know, on the left side, you know, you'll see map reviews, big data technology, data wrangling, et cetera. Whereas on the right-hand side, you'll see hypotheses testing and chi-square and correlations and regression, et cetera. So again, you know, imagine you're interviewing someone for a job or you're trying to, you know, move towards a particular role in the industry. It really does matter which one of these two options you take because, like I said, you'll end up with potentially different skill sets. So in order to maybe bring some clarity to this and to make it a bit easier to understand the content, the curriculum, and the syllabi of these, you know, programs, which can be really challenging, as Keith mentioned, we decided to launch another survey. This is really early, you know, stages. We have about 18 to 20 responses from administrators, from directors of, you know, universities that are running programs on data science and analytics. So we asked them about the institution name, enrollment options, part-time, full-time, location, whether it's online or physical, program duration. And then more importantly, you know, the majority of the survey was dedicated to a mapping exercise. And what I mean by that is we asked these program administrators to map their curriculum to IAD's knowledge framework. So Osama Payat, you know, talked about this, right? So we developed a knowledge framework that kind of defines the field of data science. There are tens of sub-areas underneath. So in our survey, we asked the administrators to see how to tell us how important it was, a particular area, say probability or descriptive statistics in their curriculum. So they could pick one of these options. They could say this is a major focus area in a mandatory course, a minor focus area in a mandatory course, major focus area in elective, minor in elective, or it's not covered in the curriculum at all. So obviously, we hope to get a lot, you know, several more respondent to this. So we're not going to draw any major conclusions clearly based on the small sample size. But there are a few, you know, interesting observations that pique our interest and something that we'll look, you know, into as we collect more responses. One is a lot of the fundamental math skills are rarely covered in master's programs. That's what it looks like. So calculus and linear algebra, I mean, they seem to be covered mostly in a four-year education setting, which I guess makes sense from a bandwidth perspective. But this could also assume incoming master's students, you know, already having those skills, which might or might not be true. So something to think about. The other was skills that are more closely associated with the data engineer role, again, as Osama shared in an earlier presentation, are covered to a lesser extent in these degree programs than a data scientist or data analyst role, right? So cloud, data processing, data integration, data infrastructure. So this could mean, you know, a couple of things. One is there's probably a potential for better industry partnerships so that students have the opportunity to work on real-world data problems and things like scaling, productizing, you know, et cetera. And the reason why maybe some of these topics aren't covered as much could be related to simulating these real-life data or production environments at schools. It could also be driven by the rapid changes in technology. That is, a lot of these technologies that are used in data engineering can sometimes be really transient. And, you know, next year, maybe you won't see several of them and they'll be replaced by brand-new technologies. So a couple of findings. And one final note, we see that there are still some programs where ethical issues around privacy, security, bias, discrimination, et cetera, aren't represented in the curriculum. But we, you know, we see it's obviously a major trend. So we expect fully that most every program will have some content dedicated to this area moving forward. So what's next for us? So we want to broaden research, as both Keith and I mentioned. We want to publish the results of our research so that, you know, we can share it with the data science community. The map that Keith shared, we want to turn this into a living tool so that if you are exploring the variety of data science analytics program options out there, this could be, you know, this could come in handy. And we want to package all of this and make it part of our efforts at IAD in supporting the data science profession. So how you can help? The surveys are still active. If you go to iad.org/Action, you'll see the links to two surveys. So if you recently graduated from a data science analytics training program, please fill in the one on the left. If you're a data science program developer, designer, or academician, please take the data science educators survey. It'll be open probably for another month or so. So this completes our session. Thanks so much for your attention. This is how you can get engaged with us at IAD. Let us know any thoughts or feedback. Now we're going to have some time for Q and A. Thanks so much. There was a comment from Steve Weiss at LinkedIn. He actually said he was trying to post this earlier during Tom's presentation. Had a connection issue of some sort. So he's, you know, Tom mentioned the Certified Analytics Professional Program. And apparently, LinkedIn Learning has seen some spike in interest. So it looks like maybe there's more interest moving forwards when it comes to these kinds of certifications that Tom had mentioned. So I just wanted to, you know, bring that up. There are a few questions. Keith, maybe there's one about bootcamps. If you want to, you know, take that, the question is, let me see. What do you think about bootcamps in data science? They don't seem to go deeper into technical parts of math, algebra optimization, et cetera.
Which one is that? Because I wanted to just take a quick, quick look at it.
It's a bit earlier in the Zoom chat.
You know, it's interesting, Hamid, because it's almost, it's coming at it from the opposite direction as Tom Davenport's observation that we didn't mention in our talk, practums or capstones. But I think that did come up in the survey last year, did it not? Capstones and that kind of stuff in the knowledge map?
Yeah. That's true. I mean, the knowledge framework, you know, intentionally leaves out some of these really critical skills that might be considered non-technical, but doesn't mean non-essential. You know, some of those were what you could call common workplace skills, like communication, you know, leadership, being able to articulate the findings of a data science project, you know, engaging with stakeholders, et cetera. You know, the thoughts, you know, there are probably other ways of defining or categorizing them or even maybe certifying them. But it is very critical. And I think Paulos, in our panel, you know, after the coffee break, Tom is going to talk about how they're doing this at Harvard because I believe he's actually leading the capstone effort for the Harvard, you know, some of Harvard's data science master programs. So I could maybe add that.
I want to add just a little bit to that. Just my experience with the UC Irvine certificate program. I'm not the only instructor that will typically have a capstone week as part of an online course where the focus isn't doing additional analysis, but some kind of write-up, usually as a document, sometimes as a slide, you know, show. But anecdotally, when I've done that certificate for a corporate client, because of course corporations will sometimes reach out to an organization like UC Irvine. They can't be alone in this. IBM, for instance, did it and said that they wanted 40 IBMers to go through that program. We actually treated the capstone as something that was course length. And I know that during the research, we talked about that historically bootcamps, you know, obviously have a very powerful hands-on component, but not necessarily a work-alone capstone, you know, more like on-the-job kind of a thing. But increasingly, they're moving towards that, has been what we were starting to uncover about bootcamps, that bootcamps are trying to imitate that more on-the-job feeling as best they can. I would encourage the person to ask the bootcamp question to certainly put a follow-up in the chat if there was more that you wanted to get at about that. But that was a pretty good way of tackling two comments at the same time.
Yeah, and one more note. We have a short presentation by Raheem Ghani from Carnegie Mellon. I think in about an hour or so. And Raheem's entire presentation is about what he calls a data science residency, which is very much about, you know, the cycle of a data science project and some of the skills that are outside of maybe some of these technical domains we are talking about in math and stats and programming, but are really critical when it's, you know, when it comes to, you know, creating impact with a data science project. So that should be an interesting one to watch.
There was a comment that just came in from S. Lloyd about a master's program that each course has a cumulative project. Again, just anecdotal experience, I found it very powerful when there was a course-length capstone. The culminating week is a powerful thing as well. But when it's course-length, you get a group working together, they have to do a project. And I've done, I've seen that done online. So obviously, it's easier to be done probably in a on-campus setting, but it is possible to do that online.
Yeah, exactly. There's one question about the survey. Did, will the survey differentiate between data science courses that aim to provide technical knowledge and those that aim to provide general understanding, example for executives, that needs an understanding of what data science is and how it could change their company? This particular survey that we run, it's geared more towards people who are just starting their careers in data science. But the paper, the paper that is work in progress for us, that has, you know, information we've collected with interviews from data science executives and managers, as well as surveyed, you know, some of these managerial roles, will have, you know, some of that information. Joe, how are we doing on time? Maybe one more, one more question?
Sounds great. If you want to take one more question, I'll give us still a good 10 or 15 minutes for a break before we go back.
There's one comment, you know, since Keith, you talked a little bit about the cost aspect of this, right? People are investing their time and, you know, in some cases, you know, money, you know, to learn about data science. There's one comment says, you know, recently, I was checking one of the online learning platforms and found 500-plus programs labeled data science, which is consistent with our findings. There are several thousand, you know, options out there. And, you know, surprisingly, the majority of them are priced less than 20. I think some of these mass online courses have, you know, some minimal charges for certifications if you want proof of completion. But some of the content will be free. Doesn't mean that it's low quality, it's just that, you know, some of them are taught by these schools that offer degree programs, et cetera. I think it gets back to our point of, you know, it is really challenging and time-consuming just to pick a program. I think what we could be helpful with is maybe providing a tool that makes it a bit easier to compare offerings by these variety of options so that when you see an introduction to data science certification program, you know, what would be a quick way of understanding what one of them will teach versus the others? So I'm hoping some of the outputs from our research could help with that.
Yeah, it's tricky. I'd like to make a quick comment if I couldn't and still be on time here. One trick is that when we were looking at DataCamp and LinkedIn Learning, for instance, because there's so many different options, so we could only do what we had the bandwidth to do. But we tried to focus to a degree on more like a learning path than an individual course. Because when you get into the individual courses, it's really tough to navigate that. Having had a bit of experience with the online side myself, I would say there's also two distinct camps on how platforms provide this. I would say there's also two distinct camps on how platforms provide this content. You either kind of have the curated route. And if you have something like a learning path, that usually is that curated type platform as opposed to the community upload base, which is really more of a marketplace. Neither is necessarily superior, but you have a very different feel to those two environments. So I think what the comment was describing was probably somewhat more of the online marketplace at the course level.